I call to order the resumption of the March 18th, 2020, meeting of the Morris Township Committee. Please join me in saying the Pledge of Allegiance. Before we get into the rest of the meeting, I just want to make a couple of introductory comments. I want to welcome everyone who's with us tonight by dial-in and by live stream. There will be two opportunities tonight for public commentary, and you will see a message on your screen to call the dial-in number at that time. This is an extraordinary time we're in. We are in the midst of a public health emergency. It is a significant disruption for all of us. That's why our meeting is being held in such a different fashion this evening. I want to assure everyone that protecting the health and safety of all is our top priority, and that we will stay in touch with frequent updates, so everyone understands what we're doing and why. The numbers are expected to rise pretty dramatically in the next couple of weeks, which is why the actions we are taking right now are vital. You'll hear more about these this evening: social distancing, good personal hygiene. I just want to highlight that our purpose in all the things that we're doing is to protect ourselves as individuals, and to do our part to avoid spreading this virus to others, and as a community, to do our part to help flatten the curve, which I'm sure you've all heard a lot about. So with that, we will get into the rest of the meeting. First of all, we have approval of the minutes from the February 19th, 2020, meeting. Do I have a motion?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Next up, I also wanted to mention to anyone from the public who's watching via livestream, I would encourage you to get a copy of our agenda. It is on the website. And by having the agenda, you'll have a better time, easier time following what we're doing this evening. First up on our agenda is our community service recognition. Last year, we initiated the practice at each of our Township Committee meetings of recognizing residents who have shown exceptional service to our community. Tonight's award goes to Gianna Del Call. I'm not sure Gianna may be with us. I'm not sure. Gianna is not just well-known, she is beloved by everyone who knows her. She has many talents that she shares with the Township and others in many, many different ways. I want to highlight a few of the specific things and ways that Gianna contributes to our community. Gianna was a member of the Morris Minutemen from 2006 to 2010. She's still a current EMT. Gianna was a member of the Morris Township Office of Emergency Management since 2016. Gianna worked with Committee Man- Matt Nun to get our Township Facebook page up and started, and Gianna is our main editor, or one of our main editors of our Facebook page. She's a contributor to the Township Fire Department and to the Parks and Rec Facebook pages. She also works quite a bit in many other capacities with the Fire Department. One of the things she does is write grants. Morris Township has been awarded four hazmat grants, hazardous materials emergency preparedness grants, now totaling $59,500, and these have all been from Gianna's work. Thank you so much for that, Gianna. Gianna also sends nixle alerts for the Fire Department, the Police Department, and OEM when needed. She is a Community Emergency Response Team certified trained person since 2013, and she's also a Stop the Bleed instructor. One of Gianna's contributions to our committee, our community, for which she is very well-known, is she's a neighborhood organizer and she's an advocate for the Foster Fields neighborhood. She began doing this in about, in 2012. Gianna started the Neighborhoods Network email chain, so that Neighborhoods can share information and keep current on what is going on locally. She helps to coordinate neighbors helping neighbors, and she can be reached at fosterfields@optimum.net. And I just want to highlight that that neighborhood, the Foster Fields neighborhood, is doing, taking action right now in light of what's going on. They have people from the neighborhood who are helping seniors who are unable to get to the supermarket. They have volunteers from the neighborhood who are helping those seniors get food. So we, I want to read the proclamation we have for Gianna, which she's not here to receive it, but we will be giving her a framed copy of this. It says, "With grateful recognition, the Mayor and Township Committee hereby recommend you for your remarkable record of community service, exemplary volunteerism, leadership, and professional achievement. On behalf of the residents of Morris Township, we extend our appreciation for all your selfless and untiring work in and around our community. The Township of Morris hereby recognizes and extends congratulations to Gianna Del Call, Community Service Award, March 2020." Thank you, Gianna, so much for all you do. We really, really appreciate it. Thank you.
Mayor, can I say a few words?
Sure, please do.
As someone who grew up in Foster Fields and down the street from Gianna, I can't speak enough about how much she has done for Morris Township, not only in the past 10 years, but, you know, probably, you know, 20 years. And one thing to know is that neighborhood probably wouldn't call itself the Foster Fields neighborhood if it weren't for Gianna's work, because there really wasn't a neighborhood group until Gianna put, organized the neighbors, brought them all together, started having meetings and getting them involved. Gianna and her family have been there since I grew up in town. I grew up down the street. Her parents lived right around the corner as well. Their family is very much part of the fabric of not only Foster Fields, but of Morris Township. And like you said, she's a dedicated volunteer. She's a neighborhood leader. She voices the views and concerns from the neighborhood, and whenever anyone has a question, whether they're from Foster Fields or We Chief or Butterworth, they reach out to Gianna, and she is just such an integral part of not only the residents commenting to the Township Committee to better inform us, but also the other way for the Township Committee to reach out to Gianna to then inform our residents. So thank you, Gianna, for all of your work. Thank you for your work on behalf of the Fire Department to get us hazmat grants for training. And we always appreciate your continued work and service to our community. So thank you, Gianna.
Thank you. Mr. Brazil?
I don't have a comment on that, but, Mr. Daley, I got a text from a resident who says that they can't see or hear the video. The video is very choppy, they say, and there's no audio coming through.
I agree. Same thing. It's choppy, but I have the audio on my phone.
Yeah, so they said the video is very choppy and the audio is not coming through at all.
People can call in and get audio.
I was just going to say, so the call-in is separate from the livestream?
Yes, it is. Two separate things.
And the li, and the phone, if they call in, is that through that phone right there? No, but if they're listening in via phone, how are they hearing us? Through that. They can't listen in via the phone. That's the problem.
If we put that and we open it up, you're going to have everybody on there with the group chat.
Correct.
Unless from you.
My que, my question is, can they only hear through the video, or can they hear through the phone also, right now?
May I answer that for you? Everybody, it's Peter here. I have you on my phone. I hear everything you say. But to see, to visual, it's only, it moves maybe every 10 to 15 seconds.
Okay, Mark is working to fix that. But in the meantime, we would encourage residents to do the dial-in, so they can at least hear.
No, it was just my question. You can't...
They can, on the, on the phone number to dial in, they can at least hear what we're, what we're saying.
Can always count on Jim Lent, though. In the eye of the storm.
Are we, a time for commercial break? Should we, you think we should adjourn for a few minutes? Well, how are people going to know when we restart?
Why don't we take a 10-minute recess?
Okay, all right. So for anyone who can hear us through dial-in and perhaps on the livestream, we're not sure, we are going to take a 10-minute break, and we will resume at 7:35. So until then, we'll see you then. The next thing up is public comment. So we're going to tell...
Should we, before you go, shall we do public comment at the end, just all at once?
All right. That, that will be okay?
Yeah.
With me? Although it is changed.
Let's get through the agenda.
All right, okay. I call back to order the resumption of the March 18th, 2020, meeting of the Morris Township Committee. Thank you, everyone, for your patience. We are having a little bit of technical difficulty here with our software, and it's not just us. There's a heavy demand everywhere. So pretty much everyone who is using the software is experiencing similar challenges. We are going to make one change in our agenda this evening. Usually, we have two opportunities for public comment: one at the beginning, one at the end. What we're going to do here is get through our agenda and then consolidate the public comments and questions until the end of the meeting. So with that, next up, we have three ordinances for introduction. Mr. Carlson?
Thank you, Mayor Wilson. Three ordinances, the first being ordinance 06-20. This is calendar 2020 ordinance to exceed the municipal budget appropriation limits and to establish a cap tank pursuant to NJSA 40A:45.14.
Do we have a motion for introduction? Second?
I'll second.
Yes, how's that? Okay, that was the second. Roll call?
Yes.
Yes.
The next ordinance for introduction, ordinance 07-20. An ordinance of the Township of Morris, Morris County, New Jersey. Let me stop here. Can you hear me, Mr., Committee Man- Man Cuso?
Yes, I can, sir.
Good, good, good. An ordinance of the Township of Morris, Morris County, New Jersey, recommending the adoption of the Abbey/Onwick Hall redevelopment plan regarding the property identified on the Township's tax maps as Block 8409, Lot 1. This is 355 Madison Avenue in Morris Township, New Jersey, pursuant to the local redevelopment and housing law being NJSA 40A:12A-1 et cetera. In summary, this is the Abbey/Onwick Hall redevelopment plan.
Thank you. Do we have a motion for introduction?
Second.
Any comments before we vote?
Why don't you announce the meeting date?
Yes, Your Honor.
Yes, okay. I would like, for the benefit of the public, this is the introduction of the redevelopment plan for the Abbey. And the process going forward is that after tonight's meeting, this plan will be posted on our website, so that the public may access that. I encourage you to read the plan. The next step would be, the plan will go to the Planning Board for a review for consistency with the master plan. And later, we will, on April 29th, April 29th, we will hold a special meeting on, on the Abbey, at which time there'll be public hearing, opportunity for comment, and a vote. So with that, any other comments?
Should we also announce, going back to 0620, the hearing date for that ordinance?
That would be April 15th.
April 15th.
Okay, and the special, the special meeting date for the Abbey again is April 29th, as of this time. Right?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. So with that, we need a roll call. The second read will be at the special meeting on the 29th, April 29th. Roll call? Yes.
Next ordinance for introduction is 08-20, pardon me. Amending Chapter 95 zoning, Article 5 of the Code of the Township of Morris. Note that this is a prohibition of automotive service stations with convenience stores.
Do we have a... Thank you, second. Roll call? Yes. Next up, we have ordinances for public hearing and final consideration.
Thank you, Mayor. These are ordinances that are up on the second reading, and this is the final vote to adopt these ordinances. The first is ordinance 02-20. An ordinance of the Township of Morris, County of Morris, concerning salaries for non-union personnel. This ordinance addresses the 2% increase for non-union personnel, consistent with negotiated raises for those Township union personnel.
Thank you. At this point, or first, do I have a motion for approval?
Sound moved.
Before we vote, is, we have the opportunity for public comment. At this time, if anyone from the public would like to comment, we ask that you... How do they indicate that they wish to comment? Okay, there will be an opportunity for anyone who wishes to comment to call in, and that number should be appearing on your screen momentarily. Yes. Yes. While we're getting set up here, I'll remind the public that we need your name and address for anyone who wishes to comment. And hopefully, that will be available shortly. Do we have any activity? Seeing none, we'll close. A couple minutes? Okay. All right, so we'll, we'll wait a couple of minutes here? Yes.
Well, so somebody just texted me, Mark, that they see the notifications that you're putting up on the screen, so those pop up, but the video is still 15, like 15-second lag. And they can't, and they can't, but people can't hear anything, so they don't even know that they can call in.
It's showing on the screen.
The screen that indicated you should call in where there wasn't a number has now been taken down.
I wonder if there's a way we could just have call-in individual.
We're not, like, muted, are we?
Why don't you hold off on the introduction of ordinances?
Well, we have three here, four, of four, for public hearing and final consideration.
It just came up, the public can call in using a number which is written on the screen, provide your name and address. It just popped, it just came up.
Okay.
But if they can't, they can't hear what we're saying, they don't know what they're going to be calling in for.
I'm, I'm putting that in here now.
And there's no separate conference number to just hear our audio, and that's it, right? It's all just through the website?
Yeah, but even the go-to yesterday was, it's just chopping and chopping, because it's getting clipped. You have too much on it, and it starts, you start getting...
Static?
No, clipping, like, this, this, every other syllable, you know, syllable is missing or something, because it's, it's just maxed out, and you're only letting in so much data. And then you throw video on top of it, and it's worse, because video takes way more than audio.
The challenges of the first time through.
I'm wondering, Scott, if it has to be video, as long as it's audio, if it's fine. Maybe we could shut the video part off? Yeah, would that help? If we could do, if we're allowed to do that, can we do that?
I don't think we need video. That's not a requirement of OMA. I believe what's a requirement is the opportunity for comment. I'm...
Peter, do you see the message on your screen?
Mr. Manqueso, do you see the message on your screen? It's not there.
Yeah, Mayor, when, maybe we, we would want to move on to...
I know.
I don't think we're going to resolve this, so we should just plow through, plow through the agenda. Unfortunately.
Is the key piece that, for it to be compliant with OMA, that the public is able to comment?
The public is able to comment.
It is an open meeting.
It is an open meeting.
It is an open meeting. The building is open.
It's, it's, we're all trying to get by under less than, than ideal circumstances here. We're doing the best we can to accommodate the public that are not here. But this is a public meeting, and, you know, people can be here to comment.
And we can remind everybody, it is recorded for viewing. We're not doing anything in a back room.
Yeah, okay. All right, so we're assuming that the, that the people are, the public is not able to call in and make comments?
It appears that's the case.
Okay.
Okay.
So we have...
To close public comment?
We'll close the public comment for 0220.
In deliberation, roll call. We have a motion...
Any comments from committee members? No.
No.
Roll call, please?
Yes.
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 Yes, sir, you're back on?
Sure, do they have a question?
We just took the vote.
Hello? Yes, hi, is this the Morris Township Committee meeting?
Yes, it is.
Yes.
Okay, just...
Name and address, please?
Yeah, hi, this is League Over 10 Hour Head Road.
Do you have a question, sir?
Um, is it, well, the guidance I'm getting on my screen here is, are you only taking questions now on the salaries for non-union personnel? Are you taking any questions?
We're, no, we're taking questions and comments on the ordinances for public hearing and final consideration. And we just did the first one, 0220, and we're about to move to the next one, 0320, unless you have any comments on 0220.
I don't have anything on 0220, but this was the only opportunity to connect through and hear the audio. So should I hang up now and wait for the question, the ordinance or resolution that I do have questions on?
Do you have, do you have a question for 0320, the next one?
Um, no, I don't.
Okay, then I would suggest that you hang up, and we'll see if anyone else has a comment on that one.
Gotcha. All right, thank you very much.
And then come back on the ones that you do have questions or comments on.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Yeah, we, I think we just need his vote to close the loop on the roll call.
Mr. Manqueso, could you, I'm sorry to the public for jumping around here. We're having a little bit of a technical challenge. Mr. Manqueso, we would like you to cast your vote for ordinance number 0220, the first one that's on your agenda for public hearing and final consideration.
Thank you, thank you.
Okay, Mr. Manqueso voted yes on that. Okay.
I believe we're done with that one now.
We are.
We'll move on to ordinance 03-20. An ordinance of the Township of Morris, Morris County, New Jersey.
Council, council first. You have to read the, you have to read the language, please.
Oh, yes, yes, yes.
Okay, in regard to ordinance 0220, I, Catherine J. Wilson, Mayor, declare the ordinance adopted and finally passed, approve the same, and direct that the clerk publish proper notice thereof in the newspaper and to record the ordinance in the proper place. Now we move on to ordinance 0320. We'll get this.
I'm forgetting ahead of myself. We're rolling. Ordinance 03-20. An ordinance of the Township of Morris, Morris County, New Jersey, concerning salaries for non-union personnel. This is the Fire Department. Note that this ordinance addresses the 2% increase for non-union personnel, consistent with negotiated raises for the Township union personnel.
Thank you. Do I have a motion to approve? Second?
Second.
At this point, we'll open it up for public comment. Is there anyone from the public who would like to comment or ask a question about this ordinance?
Actually, I have, I do have a question. Mr. Quinn?
Yes.
So the difference between 02 and 03? One is for, the first 02 is for people in the municipal building, and 03, it says for...
We do fire separately, because Mr. Druffey has to recuse himself, sir.
Ah, very good. I stand out. Thank you. Thank you.
Mr. Daley, do you think we have any questions or comments from the public?
No, nothing's coming through.
Okay. At this time, we'll close the public comment and move to the final vote. Roll call, please? Mr. Manqueso?
Yes.
Yes. Next?
Language?
Language.
I, Catherine J. Wilson, Mayor, declare the ordinance adopted and finally passed, approve the same, and direct that the clerk publish proper notice thereof in the newspaper and to record the ordinance in the proper place. Next up, we have ordinance 04-20.
Counsel, sorry. Mark, can you, sorry, can you type a comment in that we're up to 0420, if anybody has a question on 0420?
Put that number in as we go.
Very good. Thank you. Thank you. Sorry about that.
Maybe they want to get on the line while we go through the motions here.
Yes, yes. Yes, yes.
Uh, this is an ordinance amending, uh, Township Code Section fifty-seven-dash-one-fifty-nine, revising the number of members of the Historic Preservation Commission from seven members to nine members. And note that this is amending Class C members of the Historic Preservation Commission, increasing them from seven to nine.
Do I have a motion for introduction?
Second.
Um, at this time, we'll take any questions or comments from the public? Does it appear that we have any?
No.
No, I would just like to say, we, before we vote, that I am very glad that we're taking this, we, I'm presuming that we will take this step. I'm glad to see our Historic Preservation Commission increasing its membership per, uh, what is allowable by New Jersey statute. They are doing a lot of work on, um, improving our Historic Preservation Ordinance and having the extra people will be very beneficial for everyone. So, with that, um, we'll have a roll call. We... Uh, uh, did we close, do we have, okay, we need to, we need to close the public comment.
Mm-hmm.
Now a roll call.
Yes. Yes.
Yes.
Yes. I, Catherine J. Wilson, mayor, declare the ordinance adopted and finally passed, approve the same, and direct that the clerk publish proper notice thereof in the newspaper and to, and to record the ordinance in the proper place. Finally.
Ordinance oh-five-dash-twenty. This is an ordinance of the township of Morris authorizing the purchase of property and portions of property identified on the tax map of the township of Morris as Block four-six-oh-one, Lot one-point-oh-three, and a portion of Block four-six-oh-one, Lot one, a portion of Block four-six-oh-one, Lot one-point-oh-two, and access easement to allow the crossing of the driveway located on Block four-six-oh-one, Lot one, Lot one-point-oh-three being located on Picatinny Road, and the remainder of bu- of budding lands previously acquired by the township of Morris, and authorizing the use of open space trust funds to satisfy all or a portion of the purchase price thereof. This is for the acquisition of open space.
Thank you. Do I have a motion for introduction? Thank you. Second?
Second.
Thank you. At this point, we'll open, we'll open it up for comment by the public. Okay, we do have someone calling in. Yeah.
Yes, hi, is there any questions on oh-five-two-oh?
Yes, we are.
Yeah, hi, this is, uh, League Over Ten Hour Head Road. Um, nice to virtually be with you all this evening. Just a quick question on this is, um, I know there was a, I believe, I don't know if it was just a cursory review, but this, um, uh, um, this, this topic was supposed to be presented, I believe, at the last Board of Adjustment meeting. Well, was that just for, uh, uh, just a cursory sort of explanation purposes? Or was there anything that, um, the, the Board of Adjustment would be, um, circling back on this with or being re-presented to them in the future?
I will defer to Mr. Quinn for the answer to that question.
Sir, that is a courtesy review.
And will that be rescheduled for, again, in the future?
Yes, sir, it will be. Uh, we're working on a Board of Adjustment date most likely May because of the backlog.
Okay, all right. Thank you very much. I appreciate it.
Thank you. Is there anyone else from the public who has any questions or comments? That said, we'll close the public comment. Roll call. Roll call, please.
Deliberation, does anyone?
Yes. Yes.
Yes.
Yes. I, Catherine Wilson, mayor, declare the ordinance adopted and finally passed, approve the same, and direct that the clerk publish proper notice thereof in the newspaper and to record the ordinance in the proper place. Next, we have the introduction of the twenty-twenty municipal budget.
Turnover, Mr. Quinn.
Thank you, mayor. Before you, you have the municipal budget, and I will read the resolution and I will ask Mrs. Emilio for a roll call and for that. Municipal budget resolution of the township of the Mars, County of Mars, for the fiscal year twenty-twenty, be resolved that the following statements of revenues and appropriations shall constitute the municipal budget for the year twenty-twenty. Be further resolved that sub-budget will be published in the next available edition of the Morris County Daily Record. The governing body of the township of Mars does hereby approve the following as the budget for the year twenty-twenty. I would ask Mrs. Emilio for a roll call on this.
Taking a roll call on the introduction?
Yes.
You have a motion to introduce?
I'm sorry, you...
A motion to introduce. Okay, do we have a motion to introduce?
And then we're gonna have a discussion?
Um, not tonight. We're just, we're introducing the budget. It will be available for, uh, public, the public to review, and we will have our discussion at the next meeting in April, which I believe is April fifteenth.
That is correct.
Okay, unless we have changing circumstances. As far as we know, then our, we will be discussing it, um, at, at the April fifteenth meeting.
And can you clarify for the public, it's on the website for public viewing?
Yes. The web, the budget will be, um, posted on our website for the public to review between now and, um, our next Township Committee meeting. And I encourage people to take a look at it before then. Represents a lot of work. So, we need a motion to introduce.
So moved.
I'll make that motion, madam.
I'll second it.
Okay, roll call, please?
Before, before I, I vote, which my vote will be no, um, my vote will be no, just so everyone knows, because I can't knowingly support an introduction of a budget that is overtaxing our residents again equal to or more than what we overtaxed them last year. And I'll just leave it at that. So, my, my vote is no. Yes.
Mr. Mancuso? Thank you.
Yes.
Yes.
Mayor, may I say one more thing?
Yes.
Um, I do, um, thank everybody, because I know all the hard work that goes into preparing this budget. So, all the efforts that are put into the budget, I don't wanna discount that. So, um, I know that all of us have put a lot of hours in it, uh, Mr. Quinn and his staff have put a lot of hours in it. So, I do appreciate all the hard work. Unfortunately, we just don't, don't agree on some things.
Okay, appreciate that and to be discussed at our next meeting.
Mayor, I have a statement to make.
Yes.
Notice is hereby given that the public hearing and final consideration of the twenty-twenty budget and tax resolution by the mayor and township committee will be held on April fifteenth, twenty-twenty, at seven P.M. At the Morris Township Municipal Building, fifty Woodland Avenue, at which time and place, the objections to said budget and tax resolution for the year twenty-twenty may be presented by taxpayers or other interested persons. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Quinn. Next, we have resolutions.
Thank you, mayor. We have resolutions fifty-six-dash-twenty through seventy-three-dash-twenty. Um, if, does anybody want any of these removed from going as a block?
Mayor, Council, I'd ask seventy-one-dash-twenty, seventy-two-dash-twenty be voted on separately.
Okay.
All right, so then we are looking for a motion, um, to adopt resolutions fifty-six-dash-twenty through seventy-twenty as well as seventy-three-dash-twenty.
Do I have a motion? Thank you, Mr. Mancuso. Second, Mr. Arvinitis? Roll call?
Yes.
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 Okay, next up, we have resolution seventy-one-dash-twenty, the promotion of firefighter Stephen Kornine to Lieutenant of the Morris Township Fire Department.
We're gonna vote separately on each of these three resolutions that were excluded?
We can take them together, correct?
Yes.
We take them together.
So, we're, we're looking for a motion to ad- uh, to adopt resolutions seventy-one-dash-twenty and seventy-two-dash-twenty.
So moved.
Second? Do we have a second?
Second.
Roll call?
Yes. That's standing.
Yes.
Yes. I just have one comment I wanted to make on resolution fifty-seven-twenty. Okay. He can, he will be, we'll, we'll take him during public commentary. Um, I wanted to make one comment on fifty-seven-twenty, which is a resolution that we have passed as a governing body calling on the governor and the state legislature to, uh, help preserve DAYTOP, which is the, um, residential center for, um, youth who are, um, experiencing substance abuse issues and other emotional issues. We are encouraging that to stay open. And I just wanted to highlight because I, I can get lost in all that's going on today, and I think that's a very important resolution that we just passed.
And, mayor?
Yes.
If I may, just to clarify for the record, uh, sometimes we come out of closed sessions with additional resolutions, but tonight we have none.
Mm-hmm, thank you.
Just so it's clear for the record.
Okay, very good. General business correspondence? As circulated. Um, next, we have standing committee reports and commentary by the Township Committee. Uh, any comments anyone has about their standing committees or, and this is the opportunity for us to make our final con, uh, comments as Township Committee members.
Well, do you want us to do standing committee or all at once?
We're gonna do, tonight, we're gonna do all at once. All right, wait, wait. We do actually, it, let's, let's do, we have it together on the agenda, so let's do that tonight. Um, Mr. Jorphy is first?
Um, mayor, I just would urge our residents, um, to keep up with our announcements from Town Hall. Uh, thank you, mayor, for writing that letter to our residents this week, which was distributed through the municipal messenger. Um, I believe the, um, local papers got it and, uh, it's on, posted on the website. It's also on Facebook, but again, once again, urge our residents to check our announcements online for the, for the most up-to-date information. Um, Mayor Wilson has done a tremendous job with, um, Administrator Quinn in getting communications out to our residents, and we will continue to do so uh, to make sure everyone is as informed as they can be. Um, so that would be my, um, that was pretty much our, our main concern for communications, and I will leave my committee reports, reports out for that.
Thank you, Mr. Jorphy. Mr. Arvinitis?
Um, yes, um, uh, this past week, um, uh, Mayor Wilson and I, um, conducted the interviews um, for, um, these promotions, and, um, I, I must say that, uh, our fire, uh, chief has done a great job with the whole team of narrowing down the, the candidates for these positions. And, um, and both, uh, mayor and I, I were very pleased to present them to the full committee. As far as, uh, pool registration, I believe that, um, we have a early bird, uh, special to join the pools, um, which ends, I believe, April sixteenth, if I'm not mistaken.
Actually, uh, May the first, sir.
May first, yes. And, uh, lastly, I, I had asked our administrator, uh, earlier this week if there was any way that, um, we as a municipality or township could obtain tests for the coronavirus testing. Um, we weren't successful in being able to obtain such tests. Um, what I was thinking was for us to be ahead of what the state and the federal government is doing so that we can try to protect our residents and they want to be tested. But unfortunately, we weren't able to get those. Um, but it doesn't mean that we, we won't keep trying so that we can be ahead of what the state and the federal government, I think, is lagging in doing. I don't have anything else to add.
Thank you, Mr. Arvinitis. Mr. Mancuso? Mr. Mancuso, could you speak up, please? We're having trouble hearing you.
I'm trying to get to the phone.
Oh.
I got the volume turned all the way up. Uh, is it better now?
Very good.
It's better now? Okay. Uh, just very, very glad that we got the bu- budget introduced. Uh, we'll talk about that at our next meeting. I think there are plenty of points, uh, as to be made, and I'm excited, anxious to look forward to what's going on. Just a little update, uh, on the market. Um, I've seen three panics in my life before this one. One in, uh, nineteen-eighty-three, one in nineteen-eighty-seven, which was the worst in the history of the world, and, uh, one in two thousand and eight. And at a reasonable juncture, we survived them all. I'm afraid this may last a while longer. Uh, on TV today, Secretary Mnuchin indicated that they would not be closing markets, but they made the announcement at the New York Stock Exchange that they will be closing on Friday, but the over-the-counter, Nasdaq markets will be open. Uh, we had two stops in trading today when the, uh, standard and pores are so below, uh, seven percent. Um, I think this can continue to be ugly, but as in every other situation, there's always a silver lining at the end of each market, and don't ask me when this is going to come. Uh, I have one apology to make. I have come to, uh, four hundred and eighty meetings in the eighteen years I've been a member. Uh, this is the, I, I missed one when my dad died. Uh, I'm sorry not to be there. I would have loved to have been there, but, uh, I'm in very, very good health, but it's very difficult for me to jeopardize my family and my children and my grandchildren. So, uh, I'm, I'm, I'm with you and I'm part of this, so thank you all.
Thank you for that, Mr. Mancuso, and we do understand, and we appreciate you calling in and bearing with us with the technical difficulties. Um, Deputy Mayor Grayson?
Uh, thank you. Uh, from my own committees, I wanted to announce a couple promotions in the sewer department, so we had a retirement of Tim Odell after, I believe, thirty-five years, correct?
That is correct.
Thirty-five years of service at the township, Tim Odell, uh, retired. He was the assistant superintendent.
That is correct, sir.
And so, we have promoted Joe Morrison, uh, who was a...
Foreman.
A foreman at the Woodland Plant, correctly?
That's correct.
So, Joe, Joe Morrison was the foreman at the Woodland Plant, and he has been promoted to assistant superintendent. And we had a concurrent promotion of Vince Catano, uh, who is now going to be the foreman at the Woodland Plant. And both, Vince has been with us, I believe, nineteen years, correct?
That is correct, sir.
So, uh, we have, uh, longstanding people working at the, the sewer department. Um, we're very happy that they put their, you know, career of service here with, had their career of service here at Morris Township, um, and I believe the sewer plants are in good hands going forward, so wanted to congratulate both those gentlemen on their promotions. Uh, outside of my own committees, I wanted to, uh, thank the Finance Committee, which is chaired by Mr. Mancuso and Mayor Wilson on the committee, for all our hard work of putting together the budget. Uh, thank you, Mr. Quinn and the staff, Francine and others, who were part of that. Uh, very good work. Uh, also wanted to thank everybody who was involved in the Abbey redevelopment project, which is on the agenda tonight, and we're having a special meeting for it. A lot of work went into that as well. Um, a lot of work, again, by Mr. Quinn and, uh, our, our engineering staff, but also by Kathy Buringo, our tax assessor. She put in a lot of work, uh, to make sure that the numbers worked in our favor. Uh, so thank you, everybody, for all your work in that respect. Uh, thank you to the Communications Committee. Mark mentioned the letter that went out, uh, authored by the mayor, but there's gonna be a lot of communications, I believe, over the next month, and the Communications Committee is going to be doing a lot of work, so...
Yes, we are.
We're grateful to have you guys, uh, on board doing that. Uh, with regards to personnel, I'm not on personnel, but tonight, I don't know if anybody can see, but, uh, we were presented with a continuity of government plan prepared by Mr. Quinn, uh, which outlines the succession of, uh, how would you describe it, Mr. Quinn? Let me, let me hand this part over to you and then I'll come back.
It is, the continuity of government is how the township will continue to, uh, move forward and provide services to our residents as the difficulties of this COVID-nineteen, uh, come upon us and, um, as we see, um, residents and employees possibly being infected with this disease, um, how do we continue to provide those services with a reduced workforce if need be, and working with other municipalities and other government entities to ensure that our residents are getting the essential services that are required to run this municipality.
All right, so, and I think one of the key things there is that we are working with surrounding communities to provide backup for each other, so if one community has a, a real, uh, need, uh, the other communities will step in and, and help them out. So, this is a, this is a team effort, I think, across the county, um, and I'm glad that we have this, uh, formally in place. Um, we haven't said anything about COVID tonight. We had a long meeting at the Board of Health, and some of you might not have been listening in to the Board of Health, uh, so I just wanted to comment about that, and maybe we wanna loop back for COVID comments because, uh, we really haven't discussed it tonight. Uh, I wanted to reassure the public... I wanted to reassure the public of all the hard work that is being put in on your behalf. The COVID response in Morris County is being coordinated by the Morris County OEM, and those guys are working, I would say, almost around the clock, except for sleeping, working on this and responses, and coordinating a tremendous amount of effort behind the scenes. The hospital is doing the same, making preparations, we are told, some of which we can't relay to the public, but they're, they are preparing appropriately. And here at Morris Township, we are doing the same. So, Tim Quinn, I always say works overtime. I don't know how much, it's double overtime almost now, given-
Over-overtime.
Yeah, over-overtime, given the circumstances we're at. So thank you, Mr. Quinn, for all your hard work and efforts. A lot, a lot of stuff is just happening behind the scenes that residents should be assured that there are people out there supporting them. Thank you, Mayor, for your leadership on this effort and the outreach that you've been doing. Thank you for that. And on a personal note, I believe in setting proper expectations, and I think when you have proper expectations set, you are able to take whatever comes at you just a little bit better. So I want the public to be, not to panic, but to be ready for a lot more cases to come our way. A lot more people are going to come down with COVID-19. A lot of people will get sick. On the other side of being prepared, we also know that only 80% of anybody who comes down with COVID has mild, you know, only eight, I should say, not only 80, but 80% of people who've come down with COVID-19 are just mild cases. So even if you hear of somebody who's tested for COVID-19, you don't need to freak out. You know, 80% of people will be just fine, and another 15% are gonna have a little bit harder case. It's just the final 5% that are gonna be really tough cases. So most people will get through this, so don't panic if you, there's COVID-19 in the area, but still, we need to take precautions. We've been talking about flattening the curve, social distancing, and I heard on the radio today, and I believe it true, that at a minimum, we're gonna be doing social distancing and extreme hygiene through the end of April. You know, this is not gonna go away. This is going to be with us for months and months to come. It's gonna be the normal. So set your expectations for the next two months, that how you're living today is probably how you're gonna be living for the next two months, and it's a good thing, because it'll help us weather the storm. So again, thank you to everybody who's stepped up to the plate and worked hard on behalf of our residents, and just everybody to know that we're here for them. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Mr. Arvinides, you had something else you wanted to add?
Yeah, I just wanted to add, I just got notification that the Small Business Administration has included New Jersey and Morris County as part of the inclusion for their disaster loan assistance.
Ah, good.
So anybody that's a small business now can apply for assistance.
Very good. And that information, I assume, will be posted on our website. There, there, I received an email about that today, myself. Maybe not that exact one, but there was information about small businesses. I'm anticipating that our website will include a lot of links to a lot of information. There is a lot of information available to the public, and we are working hard to make sure that it's available on our website. Both that kind of thing and information about the virus itself, social distancing, the CDC website, the State Department of Health website, all the different websites, there's a lot of information out there, and we'll, I'd like to see that added to it. Okay. Thank you.
Before you come, talk about the new regulations at Town Hall, so it's on the record?
The new regulations at Town Hall?
At Axon Town Hall.
Mr. Quinn is gonna address that.
Thank you, Mayor. Yes, just to ensure the safety of all of our residents and our employees, and again, flattening curve and taking out different things so we can try and reduce the exposure of people to this COVID-19. For the municipal building, we have restricted public access to the building. Our residents and vendors and other people visiting will still be able to do so, coming to the foyer of the building, and at that point, we will be able to get them the information that they need, such as picking up a permit application from our building department, dropping off a sewer payment or a tax payment, or requesting some type of assistance from many of our departments. We have converted our senior room back into the court violation room, so we have a barrier there with a window, so our employees are safe and can deal with the public as they come in and give them the services. It's just that they will be restricted movement within the building to just, to our current employees.
Good. Thank you, Mr. Quinn. And that information has also been sent out via messenger, correct?
That is correct. It was sent out last night via messenger, and that policy went into place this morning, and it worked very well, and we continue to do so, and if we need to take further action, we are prepared to do so.
Very good. Thank you. Okay, so I do have two standing committees. I just wanted to give brief updates on them, and then my final comments. The Transportation Advisory Committee, we did meet, actually, last Wednesday evening. We thought about canceling, but we went ahead, and I'm very proud of the work that that, that group is doing. We have four subcommittees, walking, biking, driving, and parking. Each subcommittee is doing its own research and investigation, and our, one of our goals for that committee is that we will be developing plans for each of those areas and recommendations, both short-term and long-term. So I'm, I'm very proud of what the work that committee is doing. The Environmental Commission meeting that was scheduled for Thursday was canceled. We have, the Environmental Commission has many, many projects on its plate, but the one that's current right now, I guess it's gonna take a back burner for a little while in light of all that's happening, is that we're, we're moving forward on energy audits, both for municipal energy audits, and we are investigating how to perhaps encourage resident energy audits as well. To be continued. We'll have more about that at the next meeting. In wrapping up, I just wanna say this, we are in the midst of a public health emergency. I've never experienced anything like this in my lifetime. I'm assuming no one else has either. It's my understanding from everything I've been reading and watching that what we do in the next two weeks is really vital here, because the numbers are predicted to go up as far as the number of cases, and by taking the social distancing actions that we're taking right now, we, we should hopefully be able to, to flatten the curve, as you've heard that expression. The social distancing, the good personal hygiene, those are all keys, and I just wanted to highlight, you know, the protective measures that we're taking here and that we're encouraging residents to take on their own. Two purposes. One is for all of us to serve our own individual needs, but we also have a responsibility to work together as a community to do our part, you know, to flatten the curve. I do take myself some comfort in the percentages that Mr. Grezel highlighted. You know, the majority of people will get mild symptoms. 15% will get a little bit more, a little stronger, and perhaps require hospitalization. 5% will, will require ICU. Our, our medical system is under strain right now, and there, there are, there will be, as, as Mr. Mancuso alluded to, in the future, some silver linings to this, one of which I see developing right now in the, in the medical system, is the ability for telecommunicating. People can call in and get and communicate with the doctor over the phone. In fact, the experience I'm hearing is that people are being encouraged to do that, because when people come into the office, then you're in contact with other people and, you know, are in danger of spreading the virus even more. Mr. Joroffe and I, together, comprise the Communications Standing Committee. We are working very hard. I'm hearing a lot from residents, there, people are interested in knowing what we are doing locally. People can get a lot of information online and on TV about what's going on nationally and at the state, but it's up to us to keep residents updated on what we're doing locally and why, and we are working hard to do that. And I do encourage residents who have not signed up for our municipal messenger to do so, go to our website, and you'll see a link there to sign up for the messenger. It's gonna be a key source of information for us in the days and weeks ahead. And I do wanna give a special shout-out to our, our healthcare workers who are on the front line, our first responders. We, we very much appreciate all that you're doing, and we thank you. And I also just wanted to highlight, you know, this is, this is one of those situations that someone said, the quote, the Thomas Paine, "It tries, men solve." It does. This is challenging, and our community is, we're talented, we're engaged, we know how to support each other, we know how to encourage each other, and that's what we're gonna be doing in the days ahead. We will make it through this, and we will be stronger on the other side, but in the meantime, we've got some challenges to deal with in the days ahead, and we are prepared to do so. So with that, I believe the next thing up is public comment.
Before you complete your commentary, do you wanna touch on James Street for the record?
Ah, thank you for reminding me. Yes, I do. Okay, Mr. Grezel reminded me that as part of our budget, there is money set aside for work on sidewalks, and the members of the township committee have reviewed, there are two, there were two options brought forth by the Engineering Standing Committee for completing a sidewalk on James Street, east side, west side options. We have reviewed both options, and while our preference would have been to hold a public meeting and give people the opportunity to come in and ask questions and comments, that, that meeting had to be canceled in light of all that's going on, and we have heard from many people who support the west side option. We've been out there, we've walked it, we've reviewed the options, and it is our decision and our recommendation that we go with the west side option. So thank you for reminding me of that, Mr. Grezel. Did you have anything to add? No?
A unanimous decision, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. In case for, anyone from the public did not hear that, Mr. Mancuso was saying that he supports it as well. This is a unanimous decision of our committee. With that, I believe it is time for public comment.
Mark, did Daley queue it up?
Um, we do have someone, while Mr. Daley is queuing up, the people who are calling in remotely, we do have a newcomer in our presence, and I'm assuming you wanna comment? Please come up and tell us your name and address, and we welcome your comment.
And don't, don't touch the microphone. That's all. Thank you. Thank you.
My name is George Quillen. My address is 7 Bishop Court, and I wanted to say, first of all, that I think the, the measures that the township is taking to protect its employees are very good. I was happy to see them today, so I, that's something that I wanted to praise and say that I hope that it works out well, and that no one is complaining about it, because keeping our township employees safe is very important to keep the township running, so I think that's good. I really did not want to come to this meeting in person. I live with a healthcare worker who works at Morris Town Hospital, and I am concerned about our being among the first people who may get the virus, and I don't want to spread it to anyone else, and I know that it can spread when people are asymptomatic. So I think that it would have been better if I had not come down. I'm not gonna get too close to anyone, but, but my attempts to dial into this meeting were very unsuccessful. I'm surprised to hear-
Yes, is this the public?
Yeah, it's okay.
I'm surprised to hear Mr. Mancuso's voice on the telephone, because I was unable to get any audio of this meeting at all.
None.
He was on a private line. He's on a separate line.
Okay. I did dial into and view visually the Health Department meeting, and that went much better. The visual aspect of the Health Department meeting was fine. The audio was pretty poor. There was an echo. There was like a half-second delay, and then another sound that was just an echo that made it very difficult to hear and understand what people were saying, but it was better than the experience at this meeting where it seemed like every one minute or so, there'd be a new frame showing, it was like a series of still frames, and couldn't see anything, and there was no audio whatsoever. So the only option I had for any participation in this meeting was coming down in person. So I want to say, I don't know whether now there are a bunch of people queued up from the public on the phone. Maybe the problem has cleared, but this really has not been an effective public meeting. Maybe people will be able to watch the video later on and get a good experience of what the meeting was like, but in terms of interaction with the public at this meeting, I just wanted you to know that it really didn't work out, and I guess maybe one of the other things to say is that when you use preconferencecall.com, you get what you pay for. I'm not sure whether that's the answer or whether there's something else going on, but it was a strange experience. I wanted to ask whether the budget was introduced tonight?
Yes.
Okay. Was there a vote on introducing the budget?
Yes.
Okay. Can you tell me what the, how the vote went?
Mr. Arvinides voted no, and everyone else voted yes.
I see. Okay. Mr. Mancuso was also available and voted yes?
Yes. He voted yes.
Okay. Thank you.
There was no formal presentation, just so you know. It was just an introduction, and the presentation will occur at the April 15th meeting.
And that's when the final vote will be taken?
Correct.
Yes.
And tomorrow, just so you know, tomorrow, you'll be able to see the budget on the website. I believe it'll be up tomorrow, right, Mr. Quinn? We'll try.
We will. We're gonna put up on the budget. If you'd like to have a hard copy, you can have one tonight.
Yeah, you can have a hard copy tonight if you'd like to walk away with it.
How many pages is it?
It's, um, it's pretty big.
Okay. Yeah, I would like that.
Sure.
Okay. We charge by the pound, if you take it.
And you can have a side of fries with that, if you want.
Thank you.
Thanks very much.
Thank you, Mr. Quillen. We appreciate your feedback, and it is our first time through this, and it's, it's good to know exactly what happened, and we will work to improve it for the future, because I am anticipating we may need this for other meetings in the days ahead.
I hope you get a lot of people viewing the video tomorrow, starting tomorrow. There were, I think, a maximum of 23 people who were trying to dial in while I was on, because you can see the counts, if you're one of the participants, and the count got up to 23, and then it would go back down again as people got frustrated.
Thank you.
Mayor, may I comment?
We have someone on the phone.
Mayor?
One moment.
After that.
Is this person on and ready?
On hold, yeah.
On hold.
It's okay. Go ahead. Let him, let him-
Okay.
You all right?
Yes, please.
Hold on.
Shall we let Mayor, uh-
We'll probably call back. Hold on.
Can you read that?
Do you wanna comment in the meantime?
I haven't. Hello?
Yes, hello?
Yes.
You're live.
Okay, thank you. This is Legal over at Senator Head Road. Just have a couple of questions. Thank you for providing me format to do this. I have a question on a resolution, and it wasn't really clear earlier when to call until on 0520, the amendment to the budget. It actually references an emergency condition that has arisen and that wasn't accounted for in the temporary budget, so I'm just curious, was there actual, an actual emergency, or is this just language that referenced because they need to allocate funds for salaries and other expenses? Or is it actually tied to an emergency?
No, sir. That is, we, the Township Committee introduced a temporary budget by statute of 26% of the budget back at the reorg meeting on January 7th. We need additional funds appropriated so that we can make it through until the Township budget is adopted, so this is just a procedural matter to make sure that we have enough money to pay the bills and to pay the salaries.
And just for clarification, it's something that we do every year, correct, Mr. Quinn?
Yes.
This is not out of the ordinary?
No, every year, because we, by statute, we can only allocate 26.7% at the reorg meeting, and now that we're full into the quarter, we need some additional funding for our operating expenses and salary expenses.
Thank you.
Thank you for clarifying that. I appreciate it. On ordinance to 0820, which sort of deals with the gas stations and the convenience stores?
Yes.
Is, is that, is the intention here, will this apply to all gas stations, or will some be grandfathered in if they've already have and serve food and have sort of snacks and other things outside of just being a service station?
Moving forward.
Moving forward, this is what we're proposing. Any establishment that already has retail sale of food and other non-automotive-related Any establishment that already has retail sale of food and other non-automotive related items, that will be grandfathered in. But what we are saying is that service stations operated in conjunction with a convenience store are prohibited. That's what we're adding to our zoning ordinance.
I see. Okay. And...
If I could...
Go ahead.
Sorry, if I could add, just for clarification from either Mr. Carlson or Mr. Quinn, I think in terms of grandfathering in, the spirit is, for the record, I believe the spirit is, as is currently situated, that if they currently provide snacks and such, they can provide it at the current level without further expansion. That is my understanding. So the grandfathering is only to the current status as of today, and no further expansion is allowed.
That's, that's, that's correct, Committee Man Grisell. This happens by operation of state statute under the municipal land use law. You can't retroactively prohibit and thereafter eliminate a use that's permitted at the time. So if this is an existing use, if there are existing uses such as this in the town, you can prohibit them in the town, but those that are currently existing are allowed to continue to exist as pre-existing, non-conforming uses, but they are not allowed to expand their operations.
Thank you.
Got you. And was the genesis of this, or putting this edit into the ordinance, is that being driven by anything in particular, or is it just to bring us sort of up to, you know, code, so to speak, with the MLUL or any other statewide specific requirements?
This is a recommendation that is coming to us from our professionals to clarify the language in this particular section.
Okay. All right.
Does that answer your question?
Yes, it does. Thank you.
Thank you.
And then, and then two questions just on things going on around town. The, is there any update or indication of what's going on or what the Morris Museum may be attempting to do with the clearcutting of trees on the corner of their lot? Are they putting in some sort of other installation there? Or is that working? It looks like the work has stopped on there. Just curious what's happening with that portion of the tract.
I am not familiar with that myself, but I will ask if Mr. Quinn is familiar.
They are removing some old pine trees that are diseased or old. They receive the proper tree removal permits for that, which then requires them to replace those trees with numerous other trees. So they do have the proper permit for that.
You say they do have the property permit?
That is correct, sir.
Okay. All right. Thank you. And then the last question I have is just any update at all on the progress of the quiet zone up by Madison Ave Corridor? I know they were out doing measurements and tests, I think, last summer, and just curious as to how that's progressing, if at all?
Go ahead. No, go ahead.
DOT completed all of their work in January. What has to be done now is, Abnani has to finish the work, which is the final paving that is outside of the quiet zone. And with all the proper road markings put on top of that top paving, the asphalt plants have been closed. Now that they're opening up, we expect that paving to be done in the near future, probably sometime in April. And then it goes back down to the Department of Transportation for the final review and approval. And once the Department of Transportation signs off on it, then the quiet zone will be in effect.
We're very close, but...
Oh, very close. Okay, very good. Very well. Thank you for the update. I appreciate it. Thank you for your time tonight.
Thank you. Anyone else from the public who would like to share a comment or a question?
No calls in queue.
No calls. Okay.
I wanted the opportunity, if I could, to address Mr. Quillen.
Of course. Go ahead.
So just in response to your frustration, I'm sure many others are feeling the frustration of not being able to dial in or watch tonight. So we are going to let people know about the fact that there is a video for the meeting, and there are recordings that they can view. And I want to remind the public that if they do have any questions, although you weren't able to ask at real time, all of us up here have email addresses, and we respond to our emails. So if you do have any question related to tonight's proceedings that you want to ask all of us or individually, I encourage you to send us an email. So we apologize, I think, as a group, for what happened, but we are here all the time to answer questions. Please email us, first initial, last name, at morristwP.com.
Thank you. Anyone else? Final comment? And no one else from the public? Do we have a motion to close the public portion?
Second.
Roll call? No. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you.
We didn't pay the bills.
No, we're coming to it.
Okay.
Okay. Consideration of monthly reports as circulated? All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Claims for payment, bills totaling $8,134,554.06.
I'll move that we pay the bills?
Second.
All in favor?
No roll call.
Oh, no, a roll call, sorry. Roll call?
Mr. Arvindides.
Yes.
Mr. Dorfey.
Yes.
Mr. Mancuso.
Yes.[1769.83]